January 21st, roll call vote. Wayne Adams?
Yes.
Joanna?
Here.
Jill?
Here.
Doug?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chris Riddy?
Here.
Chris Wiles?
Yep, here.
Jackal, here. Good. Jill, Lisa, and the pleasure of the hearing. Such a great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Minutes. Minutes for the business meeting, December 23rd, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Okay. And if I could, Jack, just go through the minutes as we go through them, as you're approving them, just to highlight a couple of areas, if that's all right.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to highlight that in our FY '15 budget, we are going town by town, bend over to Merrimack. They really did appreciate that we have a 1% increase over our expenditures from last year. They found that to be really very reasonable. And they're very understanding about the reduction in the overall revenue side of the budget. Sorry about that. And they understand that we're going to be working through the revenue side as a committee and coming to terms with that in the near future. So I just wanted to highlight those different areas.
Any other discussion on the business? Yes?
Under public comment, Tom Flaherty came at the last meeting, and I would like to have one line added, that he had requested the document that he presented be distributed to the school committee members relative to his plan for improvement of the--
Oh, yes, you're right. You're exactly right.
And I would like to get a copy of that also. Sure. It should be noted that that's what he'd requested.
Any other discussion? Do we, okay, vote on the changes? No, you're just gonna get those things--
Minutes is amended.
Yeah. The meeting, business meeting of December 23rd is amended. Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion second?
We have a--
All those in favor? Business, Finance, and Operations, January 7th, 2014.
Yep, sorry about that, Jack. So I did comment on the Business and Finance Subcommittee meeting, so we can, I don't have to make more comments about this.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Human Resources, January 7th, 2014.
For human resources, we went through a couple of pretty weighty topics. One is, I presented a couple of ideas about the middle school principalship. As you all know, Deb Lay has provided us with a letter of resignation. She won't be returning at the end of, after the end of this year. And we considered as a committee, as a subcommittee, different options about filling that role. And I'll be meeting on the 23rd this week with both faculty members and with parents to listen to what their comments might be, so that we can move forward, you know, in an informed way. Another part of the agenda that we had was about talking through the proposal I have for redesigning the administrative organization of both Page and Bagnell School. And this involves reusing or repurposing the position of assistant principal in a way that's very similar to the structure we're using right now at Sweetser and Donahue. And that is, rather than duplicating the position of principal through an assistant principal, we'd be looking to implement at both schools a full-time school support manager. And that's what we're doing over at both Sweetser and Donahue. It's working very well. The benefit of repurposing those two positions would be to capture funds to strengthen the special education delivery that we have primarily at Page School, but generally, we're looking at that throughout the system. So I wanted to highlight that. The Subcommittee would like me to, as I'm doing with the principalship, engage parents, talk through it with parents at the different schools, and then move forward after that, so that we can move forward in an informed way. And the district also, the Subcommittee also had a preview by Steve Bartholomew. He provided a preview of some new website changes that we're hoping to move forward with. So I just wanted to highlight those.
Um, I really did like this model, as all of us did at that meeting, but I did have some concerns that I raised at that meeting from parents and students about the athletic piece. So I do want that mentioned--
That's right.
--because that is something that people keep coming to me, students coming to me, with their concern, and they're not fully understanding this.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure that they are engaged during those meetings and--
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Jill, that even if we were to bridge the principalship across both schools, there's another decision that can be made around athletics. It's not concurrent that we would also then move ahead, as we did with the middle school accessing sports over at the high school. So that's another decision that we could make. So there's nothing that prevents us from having the other model in place, but we could talk with folks to find out what they'd like to do.
Mm-hmm. Very good.
Yes.
With regard to the middle school principal position, would it be possible for us to sit in on the staff meeting part of it, just to hear feedback, not to participate at all, but just to hear? Because I'm starting to hear a lot from different people--
Yeah.
--and I think hearing it firsthand will make, at least me, be able to better judge the final decision and what the implications would be.
Well, that would be for you all to decide. My sense is, my feeling is that the superintendent works with his staff or her staff, and then comes back to talk through those findings with the school committee, whereas with the public, with the, with the parents, I'm more open to having you all join us with parents. So that would be for you to decide, you know, as a committee. But pretty typically, I've worked in the capacity of managing my own staff and then coming back to report that out. So I know you, folks would like to hear firsthand, but I think it, to me at least, it begins to dip down into the work of the superintendent, and, you know, I'd really prefer preserving that for myself. I will bring back whatever, you know, I hear. I'm open and honest about it. I don't want to, there's no sense in hiding anything, or I don't have an agenda, I just want to move forward in a smooth way. So that would be for you all to decide, but that's my sense.
Chris, would you, do you still wanna, would you take a vote?
Yeah, just to be able to get my arms around what people's concerns would be.
Yeah, again, I bring that back.
Because I have heard from both staff members, who I just see out and about socially doing things, in addition to parents. So I do intend to be at the parent meeting, but wondering if that other, being able to see it firsthand.
Joanna, did you want to?
Yeah, I just had a question. So what would be the plan for communicating for us, I guess, to us, what the staff, you know, what the staff's feelings are? Are you doing us, you know, you've done surveys?
I'm meeting personally with them.
Okay. And then as far as relaying the information back to us?
Yeah, I'd be coming back to you to let you know, you know, what my thinking is after meeting with them.
Okay.
Okay, so does the committee want to take a vote to, is that what you want, the committee to?
Uh, I don't know that you need to vote.
Just to approve the minutes.
We're approving that.
Yeah, I don't know that you need to vote anything. I'm just conveying my strong sense that I would much prefer to work with my staff and come back to report to all of you.
Okay.
And just leave it at that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes?
Do I make a, you gotta make a motion?
We need a motion.
Motion to approve the human resources, January 7th, 2014, minutes.
Second.
We already had to do a pretty good discussion. Any others in favor? Teaching, Learning, and Accountability.
Okay, in these minutes, I wanted to highlight for the public that the New England Association of Schools and Colleges has approved the high school for accreditation. So they'll be moving forward with that. However, though they're, they've approved our accreditation, I would like to take some time in the upcoming months to look at this association, as well as others, that might be more useful to us, or have a greater high, a greater degree of relevance for us in Penntucket. So though I'm grateful that we have approval, you know, for accreditation, I think it may take us some more discussion to talk about, is this the association that we want to continue along with, or do we want to look at another one? We also took a look at the district's improvement plan, and I wanted to highlight under this section that the improvement plan is really a five-year projection out that shows a pretty concrete sense of where we're headed as a district. And the budget now is a way of funding that, is a way of resourcing that. So rather than having a separate budget, kind of a standalone document, now we've, we're tying that together with the district's five-year business plan.
Any other discussion on the teaching and learning and accountability? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the teaching and learning, January 7th, 2014.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee had one particular policy that we're investigating, and that's the use of vehicles. So we just introduced the topic, and we're going to be reconsidering that at the next meeting.
That was a motion?
Motion to approve the policy minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Public comment. Thank you. Moving right along. Superintendent's Report, Innovation?
Yes, Superintendent's Report is about innovation schools, and I'm wondering if, nope, that's not it. Well, I distributed media alert today about innovation schools, and in the document I provided, there we go. Thank you. And in there, I highlighted that the district has five innovation schools that are currently underway for planning. And the process goes through the planning stage first, and then it goes through a fairly extensive public hearing, so that the public has a chance to respond to the plans that the committees come up with, the various committees come up with. It's not until after the public hearing that these plans come to the school committee for possible approval. So this is all controlled in-house, it's all controlled in the district. And I know right now, beginning to get some questions about the innovation schools, and about how certain children can go to different schools, and, you know, all of those details. That's coming. We don't have that information until the end of February. So once the planning phase has ended, we'll get all of that information, and then we can respond to it. But I don't have any inside track about what will happen with innovation schools, or what the plans will look like, you know, so we have to wait until the end of February. The innovation schools actually is a part of Governor Patrick's Education Reform Act that he signed back in January of 2010. And it really is very helpful and supportive of every student reaching college and career readiness. That's where much of this work is, has its roots. And the benefit for Penntucket is that innovation school work will help to launch us, or to jumpstart our curriculum effort, so that we can become much more current in the practices that we have here in the district. So teachers are, have expressed great amounts of enthusiasm, and are really at the root of the planning process. So it's not the superintendent, it's not even principals, it's teachers who are coming together to do the planning, along with community members. For instance, Chief Holmes is here for another reason, and she sits in on one of the planning teams for safety and public service. So again, it's generating quite a good amount of positive momentum in the district, and we'll look forward to hearing more about that. But I am interested in any questions that you might have or have heard about. For instance, I heard over the weekend, somebody was wondering if there was going to be an additional tuition amount that students would have to pay to get into an innovation school. Innovation schools are just part of regular public education, there's no added tuition or cost associated with it. Are there other kinds of questions that you might have?
Any other questions?
If you have a subject in one of your schools, and you have a large body of people that want to get into it, how are you going to select and choose who is going to get the chance to do this, and who isn't?
Well, the innovation school work is about developing our program of studies. So just like we have, you know, biology classes, and history classes, and English classes, we would have classes connected at the high school level, for instance, with public safety, I mean, safety and public service, movement science, and athletics, or the arts. So students would be able to elect those. At the elementary school level, Merrimack, both Sweetser and Donahue are trying to bring international baccalaureate to both of their schools. So everybody would have that opportunity, you know, it would be just part of what they do. And the design and engineering, I'm not sure how that will translate. The concept is that we would have a design and engineering offering at every elementary school, but again, it's too early for me to tell what that will look like. So I'm not thinking it will be about sorting kids out to take different things, it will be that they elect to do it at the high school level or middle school level, and at the elementary, it will be just part of what they do, you know, generally.
So you don't foresee more kids looking to get into it than you have room for, that?
Uh, well, there could be a lot of competition. Let's say, I'll just choose the safety and public service, there are a lot of students who are interested in that. And it may be that certain classes fill up like anything else, and they have to wait to take it at another time, you know. We can also look at providing multiple sections of things that become very popular.
Okay. Lisa?
I was wondering, you know, we have different classes at different elementary schools, and you might have engineering at one, and, you know, another one at each one. But eventually, all those kids are going to come together at the middle school level. But they are all coming from different experiences, so what's that going to look like?
Well, that's something that we're going to have to work through. So what I would foresee happening is, if there was an offering at each of the elementary schools around design and engineering, as an example, that we would then have to look at, what are we offering at the middle school that would give them a next step? So right now, they're planning what might be at the elementary, and how that might be phased in over time. And then we'd have to look at, how do we extend that up through the secondary level, too, you know, to give students opportunities? So I think that, you know, those are planning problems that are good ones, but I can't predict how that will all look like at the, you know, at the outset. But it brings up a good thing to think about.
Chris, did you want, did you want to say? Okay. Jill, go ahead.
Sure. I think this is going to come up in the planning stages as well. I was approached with people who said, okay, say my child is taking the Arts Academy program, and it didn't work out, and now they've switched to the science movement.
Sure.
Okay. They don't have all the courses that may have been designed around that, so would they be completing the program, or, you know, like a certificate program? So, and I think that that's something that's going to be hashed out in the planning stages, but, you know, that was what they were wondering, is if they don't start in, say, freshman year, will they have completed the program?
Yeah, so you might want to think about it in this way. Some students won't be officially part of the program, but will be taking the courses that they would like to. So somebody might get certification in emergency management planning, because they took that class. Where other students may have taken a pattern of classes within that focus area, and we may be able to honor them with something at graduation to say, you've completed a certain amount, and we recognize that in Penntucket, you know, for something. So shifting out from arts, or safety, or whatever the course focus might be, you know, it might eventually, you might eventually run out of time where you could earn a certain recognition, but you could still take the courses and get what you need from them. So you'd still graduate with a Penntucket, you know, diploma.
Okay.
And you're right, those are being worked out right now, those kinds of things.
Joanna?
So I just have a couple of questions about the International Baccalaureate.
Yeah.
So one of them is, you know, I know that the International Baccalaureate can be a K through 12 program, and right now, we're looking at it as a K through 6 program.
Yeah.
So are there any, do you have thoughts down the road that you would want to go to a K through 12, or right now, are you just thinking about the K through 6?
Well, right now, I think if we could just figure out how to phase in the K through 6 part, that would be a pretty big accomplishment. It could be that there, that that will generate interest at other elementary schools.
Okay.
And it could be that, once we experience that, parents and staff members may want to see it continue, you know, at the middle school and then high school level.
Okay.
So it becomes competitive at the high school level, or exclusive at the high school level, sort of like AP.
Okay.
So not everybody, like, I wouldn't take every AP course. When I was in high school, I might have taken science courses, but I may not have taken history AP. It just wasn't in line with my interests.
Right.
And I think the International Baccalaureate is something similar to that. It doesn't duplicate AP, but it is a very highly demanding track of studies at the high school level.
Yeah.
So we'll have to think carefully about that.
Yeah. It just seems like if we start people in kindergarten, and they go to grade 6, then if they like it, you would see that, would assume they'd want to continue.
Yeah.
Because it is very highly regarded to have--
It is. And the elementary school level is for every student--
Right.
--which is really a big difference than the high school program. So the benefit at the elementary school is that we'd be offering every student a very highly regarded curriculum. And if it didn't continue, they would still have the benefit of having it in elementary school, it would be a great benefit. And if there was, if there was a track that was to continue where they could elect to go into it, I think that might be an option, but it's too early to tell right now, I think.
Okay. And at what point will we get to see the curriculum for the International Baccalaureate?
After February. Once, so it's not that they drop it on you, you have to still develop it. But the, there are some very highly defined areas that they'll be focused on, so that will be coming to us in their plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I thought Chris had something.
Chris, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Under new business, recognition of volunteers with signature on secondary campus.
No. Oh, yeah, the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the signage. So we have our brand-new sign at the entranceway for the high school, middle school, and district campus. And Jonathan is here with others who have contributed to the purchase of that sign, and so I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan.
Thank you. So hi, Jonathan Seymour. It's great to see some of our students here. You guys are all in Mr. Hohner's AP government class, right? New class for us this year, and they've been asked to sit in on some, well, you got to go to town meetings and things like that, too? When you can. Local government, here it is. So we are really excited that we have a new sign out front that has the ability to put messages up there remotely, especially in the winter. We always had students from our Student Council, or our National Honor Society, who had a little public service, where they would go and do that, and we'd sometimes have to shovel it out, like, zero-degree temperatures, get there, kind of move the letters. So that was very antiquated, it was broken, it needed to be fixed. And this really all got going last fall. The class of 2007, which interestingly is Mr. Hohner's last class that he advised, when they finished up, they had this idea of getting a sign like that for the school, but just didn't quite have all of the resources to do it, and it never kind of came together. They had a five-year reunion this past fall, and they got talking about it. And one thing led to another, and Peter Morse, one of the officers, emailed me, and he said, hey, we were just together, we were talking about it, we've got some money, what can we do? And so I really didn't know how much that was going to be, but I started looking into it, and one thing led to another. And we had a lot of people throughout the community, and throughout the school community, who stepped up and put up some funding for this. And we were able to get the sign, you know, put up and installed this fall. And, you know, it's a great new look for the entrance of the school, we've got the new brand image on there for the district, as well as, again, the two-sided remotely changeable sign. So I just wanted to, you know, thank the folks who contributed, and officially bring it to you all tonight for acceptance. You're going to accept it, because we're not going to take it down. So there are a number of folks who contributed to that, and some of them are here tonight. So we mentioned already the class of 2007. I thought there was going to be a representative who was going to be here, but I guess they didn't make it, so that's too bad, but we appreciate their gift. We had two other sort of graduating classes that donated. Dawn Kalanowski is here representing the class of 2011, her class that she was the advisor for, and they gave a very generous donation to the sign. In addition to that, Amy Deacon was going to be here to represent the class of 2013, they also made a generous contribution to the sign. And then we had several other folks. The Westbury Fire Company made a donation to the sign. Jen Solis is here representing the Penntucket Arts Foundation, who as well, made a contribution to the sign. We also had Chief Holmes made a contribution to the sign in memory of her sister, who was a Penntucket graduate, Heidi Brower.
Thank you.
And so all of those things came together, you know, amassing about $18,000, $19,000 in total, to get this project done and completed. And so I'm really thankful to everybody who contributed, and hopefully it'll be there for many years to come. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to accept the sign? It's not going to be taken down.
Make a motion to accept the sign, and thank everybody that donated.
Second.
There you go. Any other discussion? No? Hearing? All those in favor? You're already, you're already, you're on to it. You don't say it down, no shovel.
Thank you.
Whittier Regional--
It looks great up there, it really does.
Whittier Regional Votec, High School--
Thank you, Jeff. School Committee--
School Committee Member from Merrimack.
I make a motion to accept Paul Tucker as a continued representative to the Whittier Regional Vocational School Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
No.
Oh.
You have Chris right next to you first.
Chris, go right ahead, I'm sorry.
Was it advertised?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
No other people interested?
No.
I'm just--
You don't want to do it, Chris?
What's that?
He's not from Merrimack.
I'm not from Merrimack.
Oh, he's from Merrimack.
I'm not moving.
Oh, it's Merrimack.
I have a question, Jack. This is our representative, our school committee, so do they listen to what we have with the budget and stuff like that, when they go to vote their budget?
To my knowledge, we've never voted on their budget.
No, no, we don't vote on theirs, but do they take input?
I don't know that there's a strong connection.
Should they?
That's well phrased.
I know, I would love to see, have him, just at least meet him and start talking to him, because when you look at how much Whittier gets per student, they get 50% more --
Yeah.
--per student.
That may be something we could figure out how to do.
Put on the agenda.
Why not a coffee?
Yeah, I know, well, I know last year, we had invited the reps to come to our meeting, and that didn't seem to work out.
No one showed up.
So maybe some other ways we can work something out. But I think that would be a good connection to make.
Because we're voting them in, we should.
Particularly at budget time, because I know when you get to our individual town meetings, the citizens all look at the amount that goes to Whittier, and then they divide it by the number of students, and they all seem to get a little upset. So it'd be nice to have the representatives at least filling us in ahead of time.
Perhaps you could get in touch with Jill.
Yeah, let me try to get in touch with them.
Get in touch with the superintendent.
Yeah.
How long is his appointment for, this next one?
Three years.
Is it a three-year term?
Three years, yeah.
Did you have, did you, Wayne, did you want something?
No. No, do I want--
Any interest?
No. Wayne's all, they're going like this.
Oh, you're pointing at me? No. But--
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on Paul Tucker being the representative from Merrimack? All's in favor?
Okay, very good.
Okay, Chris, this is yours. Is this the committee?
Yes, Chris is our representative over at Crest. And what I did is distribute to you my summary of the work that our attorney did for us on the Crest agreement. And what you can see here is that there are two kinds of analysis that the attorney did for us. One is changes in suggested edits related to Chapter 40, Section E, which talks about education collaboratives. And the other is about changes or suggestions that are not related to the law. And in the final analysis, there were two areas, number three at the very bottom of Side 1, and number four at the top of Side 2. These are the two impediments that would, could potentially put our district at a disadvantage. So the other things are about changing a word or suggestions, but these two things really do potentially put us at some degree of risk. So the first one, number three, is that the existing agreement states affirmatively that non-member districts will be assessed a surcharge. In the new agreement, there's not a mention of that, and it puts us at risk for actually being charged more or equally to districts who are not members of the collaborative. So our attorney feels very strongly that that would put us at a disadvantage potentially. Number four, the existing agreement states that upon termination of the collaboration, assets will be distributed in a particular way. And again, she says that the board is given control over how those assets are distributed, and though you could benefit from that, you could also be at risk for it. So her recommendation, her strong recommendation, is that we provide this feedback to the collaborative, Crest, so that they could incorporate these suggestions for us. Otherwise, these two particular things would hamper our ability, at least, it would hamper my ability to recommend to you that we just move ahead and sign. So even though you can see that there are some other things here that, you know, could be made, these are the two weighty areas that we're feeling we really need some resolution for.
Chris?
I'm going to start by saying that I'm disappointed it's taken us this long to turn this around for them. At this point, only one other district, Dandover, had questions on this agreement, and they've been solved. This agreement was given to us at the beginning of December, and we have yet to act on it. And I think these issues could very well be explained very efficiently by Crest, or a lot of the changes were dictated by the DESE. So I think very easily a lot of these questions could have been taken care of, and the fact that it's taken this long, the name change is dependent upon this agreement being ratified by all the members. So the fact that this might not be able to be approved by our school committee then delays Crest yet another month, because we won't have a meeting until the end of February. So I'm disappointed with that at this point in time.
Well, my purpose is to make sure that we have the best agreement for us, for Kentucky. And, you know, I understand that it could be a hardship for Crest, but, you know, as I said, the beginning parts are not things that would hamper us from signing an agreement, but the two parts that could potentially put us at a disadvantage, I think, need to be brought to their attention.
And I think, and I agree with that, but I guess my point is that, timing-wise, it could be that there's a one-sentence answer that the DESE mandated this, and that our delaying this for yet another month, when no other districts have had issues with this thus far, or have had issues that have not been resolved by discussing it with Crest or the attorneys or the DESE.
Well, in our subcommittee meeting, which was on January 7th, we did look at it, and the suggestion, not suggestion, the recommendation was that Jeff send it off to council. It's such an agreement that, well, until council approves it, I'm not voting it, because we're not qualified to. And just because other districts or other towns are willing to forego that obligation, I don't think we should.
I'm not saying that we should not take a look at it and listen to our legal. I'm saying that that has been supposedly in the process since the beginning of December, and yet this date on this, to me, is unacceptable, that it's taken us this long to get this kind of level.
We're out right now, and council has given us some suggestions. We can't, from my understanding, we can't modify the agreement. It has to go to Crest, and they have to come back to us with a modification so that everybody has the same agreement. So we can debate the timeframe, but it is what it is at this point, and this is what our obligation to do, is to make sure it's done properly.
Chris, question. If Chris has, buys a building, or builds a building, we're liable for it, correct? A portion of it?
Well, the collaborative.
Yeah, which we are a member of, okay? Are we governed, are we told, if they build a building and they take a mortgage for 20, 25 years, or 30 years, whatever, that we're responsible for that, even if we drop out of the collaborative for 30 years?
I don't know the specifics. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I haven't read through the agreement. I do know that, as a board, every member district has a voting member, who either is a superintendent or a school committee member. So any purchase or liabilities like that that would be entered into would be a decision by the board. That would not be, it would not be the administration of Crest that would be making that decision. That would be something that would have to be done by the full board.
In the full board, you're a member of the full board, right? So do you know, do they have any future things of what they're going to build?
They do. At this point, they wouldn't be purchasing. They are looking to expand by taking local school buildings that are currently unused or unoccupied and kind of fitting their programs into space that's already been developed. So like Methuen, Methuen has the new high school opening up. They might be able to take some of their old buildings and reuse them.
Okay, and all the refurbishing would have to be done through?
It would be part of the, yeah.
Through the budget? And that, but you have a say in that budget, correct?
Yes. We vote on the budget.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Another question?
Yes, Chris.
I'm assuming we currently have an agreement in place with GLAC, who is still current. So we're not, there's no gap in contractual obligations. They're just trying to make the changes.
There isn't, except that the DESE has mandated that all of these collaborative agreements be changed to go along with the new law. That essentially was caused by that.
But I guess I'm getting...
By the problems that some of the collaboratives had years.
Is there a deadline that this is causing a problem on? That's my question.
The deadline lapsed a year ago. This was due a year ago to us.
But the DESE did not give the final agreements until the beginning of December to the collaboratives to start working on. And, I mean, the language is highly mandated by the DESE. There's very little that the collaboratives were able to do to make it their own.
But you'll see in number four as an example that the language is not required by state statute. So these are the kinds of things that our attorney has teased out, and that's why I think it's important that we move forward with it.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to bring up something about that on three and four. I mean, those are financial situations that can put us at a disadvantage that could affect our budget. So if we don't have that go-through-legal and have this to an equal advantage to everybody involved, you know, who are part of the collaborative, why would you sign it? It's like not knowing where you're much going.
Well, but I don't think that I'm saying that we shouldn't have it go-through-legal. I'm questioning the fact that it's taken this long to get through legal.
It's a month and a half.
In my opinion, I question where the lapse in time occurred.
A year. It was a year ago.
Well, no, since we received this document to get to this letter today, but I've never seen anything.
That's how long it took for them to review it.
You had a subcommittee meeting, it went to legal, we've come back, it's here, and now we're voting it.
We're going to let it go back to, need a motion?
Yes, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that until this gets approved by legal counsel and the superintendent, we take no action.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Lisa?
Yes?
Yeah. I didn't see this side of the room. Oh, it was your name.
Page School Principal Search.
Yeah, I wanted to provide an update to everybody about the Page School Principal Search. We had 49 applicants, and on the 16th, we interviewed five applicants, five candidates for the position. And in the team that participated in the interview were Glenn Kemper, Sandra Capo, John Benvenuti, Martin Isabel, Mike Jarvis, and Mike Smith. And we had a very good discussion. And we also had Kristel Griskovich as a member. We had very good discussion, and we came up with two candidates that we feel are very good, and they'll be here on-site at Page School on Friday for parents to meet from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock, and for staff to meet from 3:15 till about quarter of 4:00. And parents and staff members are able to email me directly if they have any comments that they'd like to make, but we're very pleased with both of the candidates, and, you know, we're moving forward as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Jill?
When they're meeting with the public, the parents, and can we attend that? I know staff is different, but...
Sure, definitely. You're part of the public.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Moving on. Buildings and grounds.
I wanted to provide an update about our most recent committee meeting for Buildings and Grounds. This is about the track and tennis courts improvements. And we've come to decide on two different plans that have been refined according to the most recent site developments and site plans. And the next meeting is on January...
28th?
28th, at 6:00. And if you have some interest, it's a public meeting, feel free to come. And we're hoping to begin moving this project forward in a little bit quicker way now that we have two very good plans, and the site development work has pretty much come to completion. I didn't know if Wayne or, Chris wasn't there, Jack, you were there at the meeting. I didn't know if you had any comments you wanted to make as well.
Could I just get a quick update on what the two plans are? Would you mind just?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So the site development work was really very thorough and actually, well, pretty much needed. So they dug a little bit deeper, literally and figuratively, and found where all the boundaries were for the different kinds of topographical issues that we face. Our campus is challenged by the amount of wetlands and subsoils, and we have a small campus that has a lot of challenges. So in the final analysis, there's one plan that will have the tennis courts up behind the middle school, and will make needed improvements to the track. And the advantage to this particular plan is that where the current tennis courts are, that has the potential to become a field, if you can imagine that as a field.
Yeah, you would mention that, yeah.
So that's where the addition of a field might be. And then the other plan is to actually reorient the tennis courts near where they are, but to get them out of the wetlands area. And what we're doing now is costing out the different plans to see what will be the most cost-effective, and also what will be the best plan for the future, you know? So we've got to weigh how much can we afford with, you know, what the plans are. So that's where we are right now. They presented to us eight different plans at the last meeting, and we were able to whittle that down to two.
Doug has a question.
Okay. Doug?
Moving forward on the plans, I still understand that we have to work with the money that's...
We do. We're very keen on that part, that we have only a certain amount of money to work with. And, you know, the message I'm getting, at least from a couple of towns, is that they may be interested in moving this forward in a little bit more aggressive way or a more thorough way, but our obligation, my sense is that we're obligated to bring forward what we can afford and then have towns respond to that if they would like to, rather than us moving forward with something that we can't afford and that we're requesting money. So, you know, it may come to us coming forward with something that towns could then take a look at, and if they wanted to, they could contribute to it in a different way.
And so right now, the improvements to the track is taking the track, bringing it up to regulation size, and does it do anything to the fields in the center of the track?
Well, that's where we are right now, is how much can be done. So it could be that not much is actually accomplished in the center, and of course, you know, it would make great sense that if you're going to do something for the perimeter of the track, that the center gets something, you know, to be taken care of in there. You wouldn't want to do the whole track around and then have a very inferior infield, you know? That may not be the best result.
So that's one of the things you're talking about, bringing to the towns, would be if you want to improve the center?
Well, right now, what we're talking through is how much can we actually afford to accomplish? And so we're unable to tell you how much right now.
Okay.
What I'd like to see, I guess, is we talked to the towns about what our needs were. They stepped up, and then this thing is starting to grow and grow, and I think we should consider doing what we initially said, fix the track or replace it.
Yeah.
Do the tennis.
Yeah.
Let them see the results.
Yeah.
And then if they want to put another program together and come forward and say, now we want to take it to here.
Yeah.
That's their doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important, I've said it over and over, I'm never going to stop saying it, that we have to keep to our word.
Yeah, and I've heard you, you know, I've heard everybody here. So that's where we're going to have the starting point, is here's what we could actually afford, and we'll bring that forward for everybody to see.
Okay. High school?
Sorry, where's the grounds meeting, at 6:00? The one under 20?
Superintendent's conference room.
Okay.
Over at the middle school. Yes?
I need to switch cameras. The charger isn't working for this, so can I just switch cameras?
Time out.
Bring together a committee that would think through a master plan for the high school. So the reason it's on the agenda is I'd like your ideas about the folks who might serve on this master plan committee, and we don't have to go through it tonight. You can email me suggestions or names or positions or any of those kind of things, but I would like to bring together a pretty diverse group of people to serve as a master plan committee for the high school, so that by next year at this time, we're actually moving forward with an MSBA proposal. Agenda that we talked through NIESC and that we recognize that the high school was reaccredited. So we can go through that.
February meeting.
There are two February meetings. One of them is scheduled during February vacation. And what I'm proposing to you is that we continue with our February 4th subcommittee meeting, but that we delay the February, I think it's 18th meeting until the 25th. And at the 25th, my proposal is that we begin with a public hearing for the budget and that we conclude by adopting the budget, so that we can forward the budget to the towns by the beginning of March as we're required to.
We're going to discuss it in the meeting and then vote it right then?
Well, we have the subcommittee meeting on the 4th, where we can have some additional discussion, and I'm open to other ideas, but if you'd like additional meetings, I'm happy to do that.
So can I ask you, so the budget that we have here, so we would, we would assume that this is the budget we'd be voting on unless you told us that anything had been amended? Is that correct?
Nothing has been amended. There is discussion that we need to have around the fees, the user fees.
Yeah.
And so that is a point, you know, that we all need to talk through. So I'm happy to do that at the subcommittee meeting, or if you want to have an additional meeting...
What about moving the meeting up to the 11th instead of out? That way you can have the discussion at that point.
Sure, that would be fine. I do still think we need to have our public hearing, though, on the 25th. We still need a public hearing.
Right, but you had your previous subcommittee. I didn't make that. I don't know who else did, but...
Jack did.
I had my book.
So the next subcommittee meeting would be the only opportunity to discuss it, other than...
So we could do the 11th if you'd like. I think that would be fine.
I think it's a reasonable suggestion.
So you're going to have three meetings in February?
Fourth, 11th.
More than that, Brian?
No.
Fourth, 11th, and the 25th.
Fourth, 11th, and 25th. I think that would be a healthy way of approaching the budget, and I don't know that it would have to take us all night to go through everything either, but it would give us some opportunities. It would be, it would give us opportunity to have discussion.
I think Chris just needs to show up at the February 4th meeting.
Right, I think, yeah, yeah. I went through 28 pages.
If it's not at 3:00 in the afternoon, see, that's the advantage of the evening meetings.
It's 5:00 in the afternoon.
You're going to put him down.
6:30 I can get in, no. I'm not getting home for most nights.
And then we had our business meeting on the 25th.
I like that.
Okay, we can have just the...
Subcommittee.
Right, just a, well, it would be posted as a subcommittee, but everyone could come.
We'll have two business and finance subcommittee meetings, one on the 4th, one on the 11th, and then we'll have the business meeting on the 25th with the public hearing.
So the one on the 4th could just be finance. We don't need the other subcommittees necessarily.
Right, we could just talk about finance.
So we could all just show up at 6:30 and take that slot.
Instead of doing subcommittees, why don't we just do a budget meeting on the 4th? If we could do it at 6:00 or 6:30 rather than early afternoon?
The other committees have to meet. The other committees have to meet.
Well, not necessarily.
Policy doesn't. I don't know about the others.
We are so efficient, we don't have to meet. Okay. Jill?
We could do that.
Okay, Jill, Jill.
I just request that it's six or after, because it's tough for me to make it prior to, you know, like five, five or five-thirty. That's hard.
Okay, what do we get on the table? I feel like the cashier trying to go, oh, it's all out fifty.
So, question on the budget.
Six-thirty on the fourth.
Six-thirty would be...
Public meeting for the budget discussion.
So a business meeting?
A business meeting.
Business meeting.
Okay.
And then on the eleventh?
No, we don't need it.
No, no meeting on the eleventh, the twenty-fifth.
And then the public hearing on the twenty-fifth, all the budget vote.
I, I have Lisa.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This Thursday night, or Thursday, the teachers are meeting, and then the parents are meeting, and we've got some principal decisions. So that in turn turns into the budget, depending...
No, it doesn't.
No?
Here's why. The principal salaries in the budget, and whether I use it for the principal or an assistant principal, it's, it's still in the budget.
Okay.
So we're not changing it. It doesn't have any bearing on the budget.
So we don't need to hear your reply from the teachers prior to these February meetings?
No.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a...
No, I have a question. Sorry.
I had a question too, so...
Okay, go to Lena.
So Greg, I think you had said at the town, when we went with the Merrimack Finance Committee, that we'd have updated revenue figures by the end of January? Is that correct?
The law states that the governor's budget is required by the fourth Wednesday in January. They call that House One.
Okay.
At that point there, DOR now has its numbers, and usually within a day, two max, they'll hit the net minimum spending numbers, so you'll know town assessments based upon the budget. You'll also know what you can expect for chapter seventy in any increase, as well as tuition, I mean, transportation reimbursement. Those don't affect the expense part of the budget, just the revenue side of the budget determine what the gap is that we have to close, may or may not have to close, and how those assessments will affect the towns.
Okay. But we'll have it by the time we get together?
Well, normally they would give it out tomorrow, but he likes to give it to after the state of the state, which was tonight he canceled.
Okay.
It happened once, it happened once before, I believe, and they made the argument that fourth Wednesday was really just a euphemism for last Wednesday of January, because this year there happens to be five of them.